Call the meeting to order, let the record show that this is a regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, January 17th. All members of council are present. The press has been duly notified. Would everyone please stand and join me in pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. And if you would, please remember Sergeant White in your prayers. She's still having some struggles, but he's doing well. So if you can just pray for him a little bit, that'd be great. Thank you very much. Since we are absent of a quorum on the ... here we go. Item number one on the agenda is a joint public meeting with the planning commission.
We're nothing if not flexible.
I will turn the meeting over to Chairman Tom Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, we do have a quorum of planning commission here. And at this time, Susan, we present our rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're not on, I don't think, Susan.
Now I am. The applicants proposing to rezone approximately .76 acres adjacent to Pod E of the Gardendale PDD and annex the parcel into the city as an amendment to the PDD. The land use designation would be single-family residential. The Gardendale PDD is intended to contain residential uses that will promote efficient use of land at varying densities and provide a sensitive transition. Therefore, the requested land use designation of PDD's single-family residential density would be compatible with the intent of the planned development district classification. In addition, the future annexation of this property was included in the revised Gardendale master plan as approved in July 2009 and was also addressed in the development agreement that accompanied the original PDD zoning plan. Staff believes that the rezoning of PDD amendment is appropriate because, one, the proposed rezoning and PDD amendment should assist in meeting the original purpose of the planned development district master plan. And, two, the proposed rezoning and PDD amendment will assist the city in meeting goals outlined in the TIGA-K comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Susan. Any comments from planning commission at this time? Any from council? Then we'll open it up for any public comments if you come to the podium and name, address, and any comments you may have. And there being none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And, Mr. Mayor, we'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Item number two on our agenda is public comments. Seeing no one stepping to the microphone, we'll close public comments. Before we move further on the agenda, I'd like to amend the agenda. Item number nine, which is executive session, I'd like to table item number nine C, which is the discussion of personnel matters, and add nine D to discussion, incident to contractual matters. Counsel, that is my motion. Would anyone like to second that?
Second.
Second by Ron Kirby. Any discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, say we're saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number three is the approval of minutes. Counsel, before you are the minutes from the Tuesday, January 20th meeting. Are there any questions or deletions to those minutes? Hearing them, those minutes stand approved. Item number four is the special presentation of the website introduction. And we have Assistant City Manager. You're doing it, or Katie?
Katie's gonna handle. I was just gonna introduce while we get the presentation set up. If counsel will recall, back in the last fiscal year, counsel did approve to do an upgrade, update to our website, to really enhance it and use it not only as our city's main source of communication, but also as a marketing tool for the city, especially with our getting ready to roll out our focus on economic development. Katie Paulson did a tremendous job working with our website provider, Civic Plus, in putting our website together. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to her and let her run you through the new enhancements and features of the site.
I'm really excited to announce that we finally launched this at the beginning of February. And as you know, every avenue of communication that the city uses, from our weekly newsletter, the e-sign, out front of City Hall, our social media, email blast, they all point back to the website for more information. Because this is really the city's clearinghouse for getting information out to our residents, we felt really strongly about organizing it in such a way that is more graphic-heavy and less text, and organized in a way that's really user-friendly so people can land on our site and find what they're looking for very quickly. Whether a resident is coming to our site to find out when recycle day is, or if a game has been postponed due to weather, we wanted to organize it in such a way that, again, as you land on the site, you can see kind of those heavy hitter items. To start off with, I'm gonna use Tim as my help here, as you see, to show a few of those highlights that are only, not redesigns, but in addition to new features that we have on this site. Here on our homepage, you'll notice, it's beautiful, I think so at least, lots of great pictures showing our city. We have a lot of those items that, for example, agendas and minutes on the left-hand side there, as people might come to look, to find out information about this meeting that we're in right now. Our social media is, the feed is listed there on the right-hand side. You don't have to be a user of Facebook to see what we're posting out, as we do post on Facebook continuously every day. We also have our recent news, which is just stuff that's going on in the city. For example, we were a little bit delayed today at 10:30. Trash collection was off schedule due to the weather. We wanted people to land on that page and be able to see that information really quickly. We had the calendar tab there on our last website, but in addition to that, we had lots of requests for PTO meetings, charity events, recently our Valentine's Day dance, things that are going on in the community that our residents or also non-residents might be interested in. What can I do tonight? Let me go find out what the events are happening around town. One of the great features about this is if you click View All, you'll be able to see all of those non-city-sponsored events, and even have the ability to submit your own event. We have lots of PTO meetings that might have flyers or different school fundraisers, or again, charity events there at the top. If you click on Submit an Event, you'll be able to add your dates, add in the time, and even a flyer if you have that for permission to be submitted to that. Staff will review that, and as long as it's a public event, held at a public space, and it's something that we feel would be of interest to our residents and non-residents going on in the community, you can submit that there. So we really think that's a great feature, because we get lots of requests weekly for different events and for help and promotion in that. And we wanted, we took that very seriously and wanted to be able to have a place to put that. And it's housed right there on our webpage, so that's really easy to find. Also on that homepage, you'll see our graphic links on the left-hand side. Those are really frequently used. You wanna pay your bill, Parks and Recreation, again, like I mentioned, those game postponements due to weather, or signing your kid up for soccer. That's all available there, that graphic link. Notify Me, which is our newsletter, that weekly newsletter that we send out to our residents. You can sign up there. And one other feature I'm gonna point out is our Contact Us. A lot of people know what department they need to contact, but they just aren't really sure who to contact within that department. If you don't know, you can go on and fill out the information and then choose where you wanna send the information by department. So you don't have to know that, you don't have to know my name to know that you need to get information to the city. The main tabs on our homepage you'll see is Your Government, Your City, Doing Business, and I Want To. And I'll give a brief highlight of those, but then I wanna go in a little bit deeper on those. Your Government is pretty much anything related to City Hall and City Council. If you have questions about when the next meeting is, or how to contact our municipal clerk, the mayor's office, City Hall, all of our departments, our code of laws, the recently adopted comprehensive plan, and even legislative and public agency contacts. We have all that information housed. What I really love about this is you hover over that and get all of that information in one fair swoop versus having to click through various links to try to find what you're looking for. Under Your City, we have a lot of those things that a new resident moving in, they might need important phone number, or the different area utilities are all housed there. Those events around town, there's another link there if you're looking for something to do. The city-sponsored community events, the golf and conference center, parks, Parks and Facilities, educational resources, all of those items that we feel were important to our residents, we hosted there under Your City and what's going on around. Under the Doing Business tab, you'll find information on business licenses, our Chamber of Commerce, and also Development Services, as well as RFPs and bids, and our Finance Department. And lastly, the I Want To tab is all of those heavy hitter questions that Diana, our lovely receptionist, gets. How do I pay a traffic ticket? How can I apply for a committee? Where do I rent the Glenon Center, the lower level? Even, we gave information there for renting upstairs as well. Viewing the budgets of the city, fee schedules, and registering even for Beach and Swim Center. So a lot of those information that Diana gets asked on a regular basis, we tried to house that all there. If you don't know what you're looking for, you can land there and probably find it. So I'm gonna take you into the interior pages of our site. If you go to the Development Services site under our departments, you may know that you need some kind of information that likely has to do with Department Development Services. And one of the things that we wanted to lay out were the tabbed information, so that when you land on that page, you're not bombarded with a lot of text. You can kind of narrow it down by subject to determine what it is that you're looking for. Code enforcement, zoning, stormwater. Or if you don't know, at the end, Contact Us. All of our contact information and even our code of laws are hosted there. You may come to our site and know exactly which department that you need to contact. You've got a question about your utility bill. You'll go under Departments and go to Utilities. We have the same tabbed information, but again, by subject, you wanna pay your bill, which is a majority reason why a lot of people visit our Utilities page. We listed that there first. Contact information, if you have a question, you wanna establish your service, all of our forms and fees are there, and also the responsibilities of that department. While we're here, I also wanna note on the left-hand side, Notify Me is the graphic link on the homepage, but here we have your report of concern. That's on every interior page of the website. If you've found a pothole, or if you've noticed something that you wanna let us know about, there's our report of concern. We wanted that to be very visible, and especially if someone lands on an interior page from a Google search, we wanted all those heavy hitter items to be there on the left-hand One of the things I mentioned earlier under Your City is our Parks and Facilities module. I'm really excited about this. We did not have this on our previous site. But this, obviously, TIGA-K is known for its recreational lifestyle, so we wanted to really highlight all the great parks and facilities that we have here in the city. And one of the features, basically, this houses every facility that we have that folks can go out and use. One of the things that I really like about this is if, for example, myself, when I have an outing with my children, I wanna make it count. I wanna wear 'em out. So we have those features there that you can select. I want them to be able to play their little hearts out. I wanna feed 'em lunch, and I also want them to go swimming, because I want them to fall in bed for a nap when we get home. So if you click off of that and then hit Search, he selected those three features, and it tells me that we actually have two facilities eventually. We have two facilities that really work for those features that I've selected. It seemed to be hung up here.
It's Tim.
We'll see if it works, and if not, I can kinda walk you through it. But basically, you select those features, and it comes back with the Beach and Swim Center and Windjammer Park are the two that meet those features. There we go. And it even has a rating system. So if you visit our park and you loved it, thought it was fantastic, you can rate it, or not so much. You can also rate that, and we can take that information and see what it is, if you left comments, how we can improve that park. Under Windjammer Park, if you can click on that, it houses all of the information that you could possibly want about Windjammer Park. We have all the different features, even those things that I didn't necessarily click and select on that first page. An overview of the park, it requires a permit, so we notice that there at the very top, and then also have more information on how to gain permits down within the text. The map there shows exactly where that's located within our city, even contact information and hours of the park. So that's listed for each one of our facilities, which I think is a really great, great feature of that site. Overall, you can see with the website, we really wanted to organize it in a way that was user-friendly, graphic-heavy, and heavy, much more so than text, with those commonly requested items organized in such a way that's really easy to find. I was just talking with our utility billing clerk today. She was telling me that she has heard great feedback from our residents calling in to pay a bill or had a question. They also noted that they had been to our website and had great comments there. Diane, our receptionist as well, has said that we've received a lot of feedback, which is exciting. That was the overall goal, and it seems that we've achieved that. I'd like to thank City Manager Funderburke and Parks and Recreation Director Joey Blethyn. Could not have done it without them. They put a tremendous amount of time into this, and I really appreciate their support there. Also, our department heads and staff really click through each department to try to make sure that every piece of information that we have on that site is accurate. And thanks again to council for making it possible to see that vision, that this was really important, as this is our clearinghouse of information for our residents, and having confidence in us and allowing us to be able to do that. So, thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, Katie. Counsel, any questions for Katie in regards to the website? Item number five on the agenda, new business. Item number one, excuse me, A is the Planning Commission recommendation. Susan Britt.
At the special meeting conducted immediately following the public hearing, the Planning Commission recommendation was approval of the rezoning of Tax Map Number 654-000015 as an amendment to the Gardendale PDD, Pod E, to be designated as single-family residential use.
Great.
Thank you, Susan. Item number five B on the agenda is the introduction of the first reading of an ordinance to annex by 100% method. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, again, tonight before you, we've got the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to annex Tax Map Number 654-000015, owned by Drake Gardendale LLC, and to rezone as Gardendale PDD. You've just heard the recommendation from your planning commission, and staff would ask for your favorable consideration at this time.
Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to annex by 100% petition method and incorporate within the corporate limits of the city of TIGA-K, that area owned by Drake Gardendale LLC, approximately plus or minus .76 acres, Tax Map Number 654-000015, and to amend the Gardendale, also known as Lakewood PDD, to add the above parcel to Pod E to be designated as single-family residential use.
Motion by Dottie Hurst. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ron Kirby. Any discussion from council? There being none, call the question. All in favor, say we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, unanimous. Item number six on the agenda is the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, a couple of quick dates, reminders for council. February 24th, which is a week from today, is York County Day, Chamber of Commerce event down in Columbia. Get that on your calendars if you're able to attend. I know Mr. Kirby has been past couple of years. Really good event. Unfortunately, this year, I don't know that any staff is gonna be able to make it down, but we obviously encourage council to attend if you have the time. Walk to School Day coming up March 6th at TIGA-K Elementary School. Our police department's gonna partner up with them again to do Coffee with a Cop like we did at the beginning of the school year, give folks a great opportunity to meet Chief Parker and some of his staff out there. So definitely looking forward to that. I believe Chief Zemansky from the Fire Department's gonna be out there as well, helping greet kids and families as they walk to school. Gold Hill Elementary Kindergarteners are gonna make their annual invasion to City Hall on March 12th. We always have a lot of fun with them. They ask great questions, very well behaved, have a good time with them. We also have TIGA-K Elementary coming over. We originally had it March 6th, but we're working on a new date so that we can make sure we've got the bulk of our City Hall staff there. So still working on scheduling that date with them, but looking forward to hosting those kindergarten classes at City Hall. Your statement of economic interest forms are due March 30th by noon. If you haven't done them yet, I encourage you to jump on it. If you're like me, the longest part was trying to remember the password you used to get back into it from last year.
I have to call 'em every time.
Ain't that the truth?
I had to call and reset mine again this year. But anyway, just make yourselves a note, please, and get those turned in. I do have, at our last council meeting, Ms. Hursey, you asked a question in regards to the DNR survey on the COs. Yeah, their letter had said they would make recommendations, and what did that hold? I heard back from their senior administrative assistant, who had talked to their lieutenant, Dottie Pritchard, and he advised that after the investigator has made their recommendations, obviously after the investigation's complete, he'll make those to his supervisor, who will then make those recommendations up to the Colonel, Colonel Frampton. The Colonel of SEDNR has final say if a zone recommendations may be established on any part of the body of water. That's about all the details they could give me at this time. But they are still planning on conducting their investigation once the boating season hits. I believe they cited March 22nd through a September 6th date or something around that timeframe, so basically from Memorial Day to Labor Day. I am pleased to report that Chief Parker has been in contact with DNR. They're gonna work on teaming up on trying to be more visible on the lake. Chief Parker's also put together some numbers in regards to what it would take for us to do an every-weekend boat patrol type thing, and we'll be bringing that for a discussion with council, either at a workshop or at the March council meeting, for council to consider there. Let's see, what else do I have? Spring sports registration finished up this past weekend with 1,462 youth sport participants. That's the highest registration for us by far.
What was the number, Charlie?
1,462 was the last count I had gotten from Mr. Blethyn over the weekend.
Fantastic.
That's 200 more than what we had last fall. So we're gonna let 'em play in the woods behind City Hall. We'll create our own fun. The Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament scheduled for March 27th. Registration's going on now. It's 100 bucks a golfer at this point. We always end up with a waiting list. We've had a waiting list every year that we've done it. So if you wanna get signed up and get your team in, I encourage you to do so quickly before all our spots fill up. We typically try to limit it to about, I think it's 132 golfers, just to keep the flow of the tournament, you know, going smoothly so that people aren't still teeing off at 7 o'clock at night.
We gotta put some governors on golf carts this year.
I won't be on one this year.
Let's see. Like to congratulate Ms. Stalford and Ms. Hursey on graduating from the Municipal Elected Officials Institute. Congratulations. We were gonna, and we'll be sending out the notice on Ms. Hursey like we did on Ms. Stalford. Unfortunately, when the Municipal Association put it up, apparently you now live in Arcadia Lakes, South Carolina, so.
Cool. How do you like it there?
I love it, yeah. I'm serving on both councils.
How's their website?
Terrible.
I think they've gotten that correct, and we'll be getting that out shortly. Would like to thank and congratulate firefighter Kenny Salinger. He is gonna be taking over as our Safety and Risk Coordinator. Very important position with us. Fire chief has done it here recently. Tim Gillette wore that hat for many, many years. Lot of paperwork, lot of documentation, but at the end of the day, having that and also having a safe work environment helps us save money on our premiums. We usually save very, very well there. So looking forward to Mr. Salinger assisting us with those duties. I'd also like to thank our Public Works crews and Public Safety crews for their efforts during the ice storm last night. And I'm gonna go ahead and thank them ahead of time for what's on the way, apparently, tomorrow evening and Saturday. But because there is a good chance for black ice refreeze over the evening hours, we ask for people, delay your commutes as much as possible in the morning, be safe out there, allow yourself some extra time. And I just got notice from the school district, Fort Mill School District is on a two-hour delay tomorrow, as well as Rock Hill School District. So if you teach down there, work down there, and you've gotta head that way, just keep that in mind, they are on a two-hour delay. The last thing I have, if you can turn your attention to the screens, we've been talking a good bit over the last probably six months about economic development. And I've been working diligently with staff, primarily Katie Paulson and Susan Britt, as well as with York County Economic Development Director, David Swinson, who just recently took over. With their assistance, we've put together, been able to get some graphs, charts, pertinent information that people that are in the business as far as retail and primarily restaurants, what they're looking for in an area. And we can send council copies of these. I realize they're a little hard to see on the screens. Your top graph there shows your population by age, both in 2014, which is your blue line, the yellow line is anticipated in 2019. Our largest age demographic is the 45 to 54-year-olds, both now as well as in 2019. Our second largest is that 35 to 44-year-old age group. So our largest demographics are pretty much between 35 and 65 years of age here in the city. The chart below it just kinda shows you what the actual population is by age group. So it's more numbers that translate into the bar graph you see above it. Some other information that we've compiled, educational attainment. This is big for these types of land planners within these large corporate organizations. And I'll tell you, I was very pleasantly surprised that 40%, just over 40% of our population in TIGA-K has a bachelor's degree. And with that, you've got another 18% has some college with no degree. So again, it just leads to, you know, it's a very well-educated community. Below that, you see some of our income levels. The median household income for TIGA-K in 2014, $104,180. The median, projected median household income in 2019 is $119,242, giving you a per capita income between 44 and 52 in the next four years. So that tells us, you know, that would tell an economic or a land developer, land planner for a corporate entity, what are our income levels here in town? Yeah, am I looking to put a Kentucky Fried Chicken, or am I looking to put a Carabas? Yeah, or something like that. Not to speak ill of Kentucky Fried Chicken. I'm a fan, so. Another interesting bit of information we're able to put together is the anticipated owner occupied housing units by value. So you're looking at our average home value in 2019 of being $405,823 here in TIGA-K. Hot dang. My house is going to increase in value. But any event, again, more pertinent information that these type folks are looking for. Employed population, 16-plus by occupation. You can see by these numbers, the majority of our population fall within the white collar, what is classified as the white collar industry, management business, professional sales, administrative support, and services is where our folks are working. And then the, whoops, behind on my slides there. Sorry about that. And then the pie graph you see there, again, just kinda shows you where our 2014 household income ranges are, which again, is all very useful, very pertinent information. This next chart at the top uses the planning tapestries. You've seen these in our comprehensive plan before, but it shows us in how we stack up against the nation. And with the exception of the Rust Belt traditions and the green acres, which is your, folks that are gravitating towards those heavy industries or farmland, we far exceed, outpace the rest of the country in these... the rest of the country in these planting tapestries. Obviously, with our largest coming in, the up-and-coming families, the Boombergs and the Middlebergs, you know, your bright and young professionals, your savvy suburbanites. I didn't come up with these things. Please don't ask me what they mean.
I know a few Bloomberg's.
But it means a lot to people that, it means a lot to people that are in this industry. They know what it means. The chart that's right under that shows what our employment rate is here in TDK. 96.8% of our citizens are employed, which is fantastic. So, you've got 3.2% unemployment rate in TDK. That's far below the state and national averages. So, probably the most important piece of information that we've gotten together is, okay, we know what they're doing, you know, we know what the age demographics are, we know what they're, you know, what types of homes they're living in and things like that. Where do they spend their money? Because ultimately, that's what these people want to know. You know, are they spending their money on what my product is? So, there's a lot of information there, but probably the biggest one is food away from home. Obviously, if we're trying to attract restaurants into Stonecrest in TDK, and in 2014, our citizenry spent $15,780,656 on food away from home. Food inside the home, $23,529,000. So, they are cooking a lot at home, which is good, and hopefully making healthy choices there, but that $15 million number, that's an average of $5,261 per household that they're spending on an annual basis. So, now, as I'm the land acquisition person, land planner for a Darden Group or somebody like that that owns multiple chains, now I know what the demographic is of the city. I know whether they're not really a transient community, but I know they don't have a lot of renters. They're more owner-occupied. Also now know what they're spending their money on. So, with council's blessing, what our plan would be, we have established or done some research, Susan's been able to compile a list of the major players that, like your Darden Groups and things like that, that their corporations own multiple chain-type restaurants. We know who the contact people are. We've got their addresses, their emails, their phone numbers, things like that. What we propose to do is compile all this data, you know, in a nice presentation, send them a flash drive, you know, with a nice cover letter on it, welcoming them to TDK, doing their research for them, getting them in the door, but also putting this under the new business or doing business section of our website. As we've talked with folks in York County Economic Development, they said, don't print all this out and send it to them, it'll end up in the trash can. They said, send them something they can click on, and if you've got something, they'll take them back to a website, they'll click on that, and they'll look at it. So, this is kind of how we would like to get the ball rolling on economic development. Again, thanks to staff, thank you to York County Economic Development for their assistance in helping us put this, get this dated together. And with that, that's all of my manager's report, and I'll turn it back over to you guys.
As far as council's blessing, you just asked for that on this economic development letter. You just need us to say go?
Yes.
Does anyone on council have an objection to anything that Charlie just said?
Not at all.
No, sir.
Comment?
Yeah, sure.
What's phase two of that? You send that to them and then what?
Send it out to them and then follow-up, phone call, email, hey, wanted to make sure you got the information. Is there any additional questions we can ask of you? How do we get you in here? What more information can we help?
Who do you have on staff that's involved with this economic development?
Right now, it's a core of just four of us currently, myself, Katie, Susan, and Tom Goble. I would foresee probably myself, as well as council, working to take the lead on, once we, you know, once we get the contacts and get them interested, and then rolling out the red carpet and seeing what more we can do to entice them to come in and set up shop here.
Do you have any objection to any council liaison to that group?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Would anyone on council be interested in being in that group?
Interesting.
I would.
I think a lot of us would be.
As long as, it might be a bigger group than you think.
And that is fine, and I mean, this is not something that, you know, we wanted to get the ball rolling, show council that we're not taking it lightly. The way we keep, the number of folks that keep coming into City Hall, talking about they're interested in this parcel or that parcel, we're worried that if we didn't start trying to create our own destiny, Stonecrest would sell out, and all the lots would be built, and we wouldn't have any more restaurants, any more retail than what we have right now. Yeah. Discount Tire is a wonderful store. I think we're good on tire stores for this area. Yeah, I don't think we need too many more nail salons in this area, so.
So, you have our blessing.
Okay.
Go.
Might, I mean, it's a little premature, I'm sure, but, you know, once you do get this ball rolling and you start having some dialogue, maybe one thought would be to have kind of a TDK day, where we invite those interested people in for lunch, you know, upstairs or somewhere, where then council can be there, of course, anybody that's interested are available. And it's a time for us to showcase our city a little bit more, and, you know, really just talk to people, and obviously, the staff would be the ones that are well-versed in those kinds of things, but just to talk more about
Great idea.
...our development services and how we care for our city, and on and on and on, other things to entice them.
Maybe something that we can partner either with York County and economic development as well as York County Chamber.
Yep.
Potentially on, absolutely. That is a great idea.
Charlie, I know that staff is working on the codification of 77 and merging now that we have the comprehensive plan. Because this would be important for the signage, how long do you think that's going to take to be accomplished?
It looks like right now it's going to probably take two rounds on 77. One, to get the signed stuff back to council for y'all to have discussion on. The rest of it, probably going to take a little bit longer. Yeah, so, I mean, the signed stuff could be back to council as early as next meeting if council would like to take up that issue in 77. And as we keep plugging along with the rest of it, maybe late summer, early fall for the remainder of it. The only thing that would impact what we're looking at right now as far as an economic development would potentially be on our signed regs. The rest of 77, the way Stonecrest was platted and zoned, it's all GC1, GC2, except for obviously the areas that were with the residential, like Stonecrest Villas, and then obviously the amendment to allow for the apartments. The rest of the vacant parcels out there that are still owned by Stonecrest Enterprises are GC1, GC2, which would allow for these things to come in. So, I guess I say that, I mean, the bulk of the changes to 77 as it relates to the comp plan, probably not as pressing as potentially taking up the signs, so we'd probably do it in two rounds. That would be my recommendation, is that we bite off one chunk of it and then bite off the next bit.
And you're comfortable with that timeframe? I think that when we had talked, that the COG had presented something, and it was obviously costly, but you're going to be taking care of it in-house?
Yes, ma'am. I have full faith and confidence we can take care of it.
Okay.
Versus spending the $50,000,000. Yes, ma'am.
How long did they think it was going to take?
I'm not sure.
If they were going to be doing it. I knew, obviously, they wouldn't have someone full-time doing just us.
No, I'm not sure what their timeline would be.
Okay.
Why do you want to split that in two parts? Tell me.
One, as the business owners out there have expressed to staff, their reservations, we'll say, in regards to what our current sign regulations are in the ordinance, that potentially could have an impact on economic, on new businesses coming in, may not. The rest of it wouldn't be as tied to the economic development, is why I was thinking potentially two rounds, but doesn't necessarily have to be done in two rounds.
I got you. I understand that, because the signed deal's going to take some conversation.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Because there are a lot of people interested without that sign that's out there, because it's unique, is what we have.
So, if I'm understanding you correctly, that could come back to us in March?
What we have right now, yes, we could bring, we've already done public hearing on it. If council recall, I believe that was back in October or November. So, you don't have to notice for a new public hearing on it. And we could bring it for a potential first read, whether or not it gets a first read, and it may just potentially get discussion. We can absolutely send that version back out to council as early as tomorrow, start taking feedback from council on that, have discussion at the March meeting. Whether or not you get comfortable with it enough to do a first read is entirely up to y'all, but we could have it.
Is council okay with us getting the signed portion of that next week at some point, so we can go through it and discuss it amongst ourselves and with city manager?
Sure.
And then bring it back as a council reading on March 16th? Is that all right with everybody?
Sure, that's right.
All right, and then we could do second read on that in April, if everything goes well.
Sure.
Okay, so there's a plan on that.
Any other questions, Charlie?
Actually, just one more.
Yes, ma'am.
Charlie, about the deer population survey? I have a lot of people asking me about that.
And we have been asking DNR. I've got a feeling they're going to end up putting Tim Gillette on their block call list. He's calling them daily. They were supposed to have done it in early February. Obviously, they haven't yet, and Tim has been calling daily, trying to get a response, because we are as curious as to where the heck are they, as I'm sure the public is. I had hoped to have been able to give an update tonight, but we have not gotten that call back yet, and he is starting to escalate that all up to hire folks. They're not being very responsive for whatever reason.
The local biologist that was supposed to perform it?
Yes, and I believe Tim has now recently left messages with Charles Ruth,
That's perfect.
who is that guy's boss, to find out what the heck's going on, and why they're not being responsive. So, I'm sorry, I don't have an update on it yet.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, item number seven on the agenda, public comments. Are there any public comments? Seeing no public, item number eight on the agenda is council comments. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to read this. I left my glasses on the dining room table. I wrote it pretty big here. Anyway, yeah, I do plan on attending York County Day. I think it's a good thing, and it's a, I hope more people can participate. It's a good venture with the Chamber and a good program. Thank you for, Katie, for getting the father-daughter dance out on the sign. That was a success. We only had reservations for 40 and ended up with about 110. And we're going to have some money to give to the fund for Sergeant White. Congratulations, Kenny Salinger, chief. He's a good one to choose, good guy. And thanks to Public Works, Charlie, they did do a super job. I did fall down this morning, but, you know, they didn't get down my street. I got up. That's all I got.
You have a sidewalk.
I don't have a sidewalk.
Chris? Chief, the boat patrol issue, I know you're fully aware of the resources that are available to you, and just a reminder to the citizens that at one time we did have the wave runners out there that were donated by, I believe it was Alpha Motorsports in Rock Hill at one time, and I don't even think, I'm not sure if they're in business anymore. Hagar might be, or Hager, whatever they call themselves down there, might be a candidate for that, or I don't know if that's something that you might want to explore, that option as well. I think they were very, very resourceful in helping us, and I think they did prove to be pretty good out there. Katie, good job, man. And I want to welcome Sylvia to the group here. I know we have before. She's done a great job on our packets, and I thank you so much for that. And Tim, again, great job on the roads. That was a good thing that we soaked them down first, and it seemed to prove to work well. And that's it.
Dottie?
Just to reiterate, if you haven't done your statement of economic interest, do it. Jen and I happen to sit next to somebody at Mass who paid $100 fine four years in a row for not doing it. I don't even understand why you would do that, but I will tell you, apparently, they actually do fine you $100 if you're late, so just a word to the wise on that. Charlie, I wanted to thank you for the note you sent out, updating us on TCUD 2. Certainly is a lot of work going on, and I know that your team is overworked, and they're getting worn out, so, you know, from all of us, I'm sure, you know, we want to say a big thank you, and I'm sure you have a plan in place, or moving forward with the plan we have, and as we go downstream a little bit, hopefully, it'll become less burdensome on the team, and they can not be putting in 11- and 14-hour days and doing what they need to do. But it's a great job, and, you know, it's easy, we forget about it. This was the biggest issue there was last year, and, you know, once we bought the system, we kind of all just, you know, you don't forget about it, but things are just happening, and we forget sometimes about the people behind the scenes. But a great job, and thank you, and please pass along my thanks and our thanks to your team, and we'll be sure if we see them on the street that we do likewise. Katie, great, the website looks fantastic. It's just amazing to me, six years on council, just to see the changes that have occurred, you know, in the city and just with the leadership and, you know, just with all the things we're doing. It's really putting TDK on the map if we weren't before, so this is just one more step, I think, in the right direction. And also, just, I know Sergeant White's not watching the meeting, gosh, I hope he isn't, but, you know, to let him know, we really are all thinking of him and pulling for him and rooting for him and praying for him, and we hope to hear good reports from you, chief, as his treatments progress, and we hope he's on the road to recovery soon. That's it for me.
Jen?
Just want to let everyone know that the beautification committee meets on Thursday at 2:00 PM in the lower-level meeting room of the Glenn Center, and they have two workdays coming up. They're both Tuesdays, March 10th and 17th, and they will be in the Living Memorial Gardens starting at 9:00 AM. And also, girls on the run are looking for mentor runners, and they're also looking for donors, so I've had someone request that I announce. Pam Gibbs-Smith, if you have any interested in this, you can contact or contact me through the city website, and I can direct her to you.
Thanks, Jen. Couple things. One is the Anthony White, the GoFundMe. That's still operational, and I think the last I saw it was about $16,000 that's been donated so far, but I'm only accessing that through my Facebook page or the city's Facebook page. Can you just go on the website and put in GoFundMe? Is it at GoFundMe.com and then put Anthony's name in? Is that for those who are not on Facebook or anything like that?
You can do GoFundMe and his name, and it will pop up under that website.
So, it's GoFundMe.com, I guess?
You can just put GoFundMe Anthony White, and it will also...
Google it.
So, then you can do a Google search that says GoFundMe Anthony White. Perfect, that'll work. That'll work. Thank you. Water bill. I like the fact that we all have account numbers now, but can we please go back to the phone number? You know, with the old water bill, you used to either be able to put in your account number or your phone number in, and you could click one of those, and then it would give you your water bill. I can never remember my account number, and it was a, I hope my wife's not watching, but it was a little bit of a tense situation last night around the house looking for the water bill, you know, so if we could, just so we could have the account number. So, if we could investigate that?
It's a, I'm pretty sure the response we got was, it's done that way for security protocols, but we will make certain to ask that question again.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Council retreat, we need to do one. I'd like council to look at some dates, maybe April, maybe, you know, April 17th, 18th kind of thing, if we could get a council retreat together. My thoughts on a council retreat, and I'm going to put them out there, and you can all poke holes at it or whatever, is maybe if we do it on a Friday and Saturday, Friday afternoon, maybe we can go up and play croquet, have a little bit of a team-building idea of, you know, and then maybe do dinner Friday night, and then come back on Saturday morning and go over the things that we want to discuss, even so much as Saturday morning, each one of us gets in a golf cart with a senior staff member, and you get chosen an area of the city where you can go ride around and see what you like and what you don't like about the city, and come back and discuss it at the council retreat. So, in other words, we'd get into a golf cart, and Rod would not get Molokai Extension, because that's where he lives, he'd get over to Executive Point, or he'd get over into Lake Shore, and he'd ride around there and see the differences going on there. Chris, the same thing, would not get Anchorage, he'd get the Windsong Bay neighborhood. Chris, the same thing, would not get Anchorage. He'd get the Windsong Bay neighborhood. And I would get Anchorage or wherever, so that we could see different things and go with the staff person and have a discussion about, and then come back to all of council and say, you know what? I don't think anything's wrong with such and such neighborhood, you know, and just talk about it. And talk about what the city needs. We're going, we're moving fast, we're doing a lot of things, but I'm afraid that maybe some of the things that we've done in the past are starting to slip. So I think I'd like to get council together, have a conversation, and go around the city and see what we're talking about. I know we all do our ride of ice. We all drive around. I know I do. Well, I am now, thank God. But, you know, riding around and seeing what's in the city and what I like and what I don't like, and then making comments. Maybe if we all got together and talked about those comments. So those are some of the things that I'd like to talk about on a council retreat. And then, as Chris was starting to say, something about economic development. Well, okay, we're going to send this out. We're going to get people to talk to us. What do we do with it now? Is economic development something that we look for people in the city to be involved with? You know, as a committee? Is that something we want to do, similar to what the county does, similar to what Fort Mill does? You know, have an economic committee, economic development committee? I don't know. We should talk about it. You know, we all have our ideas. Let's get in a room and talk about it. So that's what I'd like to try and do. If everyone can look at the 17th, 18th, you know, maybe as a deal for a council retreat, I think that's something we should get to. And another thing I'd like on that council retreat is town hall meetings. We've all talked about it. We've all discussed it. We've all waited for, you know, ideas of what we want to do at town hall meetings. Let's put them out there. Let's develop a plan for a town hall meeting. Some of us campaigned on that, so let's get it moving. Lastly, I read today in the Herald that the state of South Carolina wants to give people their money back. If you are owed money, the treasurer wants you to come and claim your money. It's unclaimed funds in South Carolina. And since it was a snow day and I had nothing to do, I went Googling around. And I can tell you that there's one member of council who has unclaimed funds.
If it's me, let me know.
That the state wants to give back to you.
I'll take it.
So go on the Herald article. It'll show you, it'll tell you that. And it's not on, it doesn't, it's not a person from Chris over to Dottie that they mentioned.
Right.
So just to that point, that's the end.
It's in reserve.
I can't win the lottery either.
Well, whatever. Whatever it is, I don't know, but I thought it was, I checked my name several times. Nothing came up. So I, just suggestion to go look at it. It doesn't take any time to look at it, a couple minutes. It's interesting. That's all I have for council comments. Number nine is executive session. Council, I want to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session for a discussion incident legal matters, for discussion regarding contractual matters related to Catawba Park, and for a discussion of other contractual matters.
Motion by Dottie Hershey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen Stauffer. Any council discussion? There being none, call a question. All in favor, seeing the saying, aye.
Aye.
We're in executive session.